No, you're good. It's we're...
We gotta open her up?
Yeah. Are we good? Okay. So we're...are we good, Michelle? Okay, so we're...it's 1:00. We're gonna start the work session. And we're gonna start off by going down to the basement. I wanna do a walk-through on a room down there real quick and talk about a couple of things. So, all right, so let's adjourn or go down to the basement.
Go ahead.
What you doing? Here. 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 What you doing? Here.[801.22]
Okay, we'll get started again and we'll move on to update on Ormsby Road, Justin Smith.
Good afternoon. Alright, thanks everybody for allowing me this time and real quick, I've got a quick presentation I had put together just to provide details of the project. I know there's been a lot of information flying around and it's tough to keep track of, so I thought while we're all together, I could provide one summary, if you will. I've also got a handout. So we'll reference, we'll reference that handout on a later slide, thank you. Basically, to get everybody back up to speed, last work session, I provided an update on a construction project that was stalled, that was up for liquor license renewal. And so it was for informational purposes at that point in time. I also had any, had another meeting to attend in Evansville that evening and with your permission, I attended that one and unfortunately, by not being here, I was not here to respond to questions that were raised by the applicant. Alright, sorry about that. Anyway, so yeah, I was not here for the comments that the applicant made. I did however, have the opportunity to view the meeting, the recorded meeting on YouTube that evening. And so that evening, I reached out to, the architect that I was certain had spoken with the applicant and asked him to forward me any communication he had relative to that. And so that's really where this timeline starts. Basically, what I'd like to provide with this presentation is the activity that's occurred since last Tuesday's meeting. Like me to pause?
Thank you for coming down, Charmaine, we wanted to have you present during this, this is talking about Ormsby Road, Northern Dreams. And any, the communication that's taken place with the owners of that property.
Okay, so I don't remember exactly what I was saying when we left off, but basically what this presentation begins with is documentation of communications that have occurred since the last meeting. I mentioned previously that I reached out to the architect that I was certain had provided a proposal for the project and he forwarded me an email that I forwarded to you all the day after the meeting. After that, this picks up on the following Monday. Or excuse me, so here, here is in fact, the email that I received from Mr. Dagel where he references that he is forwarding an email that he sent on September 2nd of the previous year. And the text of that email is in this following slide where he stated that he estimated that $78,000 would be, seven to eight thousand dollars would be a rough guess for what it would take to provide the services requested. And provide some other details with that and also states that work could begin as early as the following month. You'll notice in the previous email where he states, he heard nothing else from the, from the potential clients until January of this year, where he heard from someone who he did not catch the name of. It's assumed it would be Ed Rojas because his response was that he would have his son call him. Anyway, so that's, that's the communication from the week following the meeting. Picking up on Monday, Chairman Freel reached out to me and asked if I'd heard anything from Mr. Rojas and I stated no and he asked me to reach out and attempt to schedule a meeting so that we can meet before this meeting date. You see there, I reached out on both Monday and Tuesday, leaving voicemails and finally heard back on Wednesday from Mr. Rojas. I can play the voicemail if you like, this is the voicemail I received at 6:25 Wednesday morning. But this being a PDF, it might actually, might not play, I built this in PowerPoint and then converted it to Adobe, I apologize, so I may not be able to play this. I can summarize that Mr. Rojas basically explained that he was not going to be available for a meeting during business hours this week and that we should contact either his daughter or his son-in-law to schedule a meeting. Unfortunately, he didn't provide any forwarding contact information, so as you'll see in the, in the timeline, in the handout that I provided you, I spent part of that morning chasing down appropriate contact information and then left a voicemail with Anna, who I then heard back from later that afternoon and she explained that she lives in Gillette, which would complicate her making it down for an in-person meeting, to which I stated, that's no problem, we'll set up a Zoom meeting. And we agreed on a time and sent her an invite for the Zoom meeting. On Thursday, Commissioner Freel and I logged into the Zoom meeting and by about a quarter till four o'clock, realized that Anna may be having some difficulties, so Commissioner Freel called her on his cellphone. And she stated she was having problems with her computer, Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Freel explained that that's not a problem, he already had her on speakerphone and we can continue the meeting in that fashion. The rest of this handout that I provided chronicles that conversation and it's fairly detailed, so I won't attempt to read through it all here, but what it boiled down to is, is the night before, when, after getting off the phone with her, I did forward the email in question from Mr. Dagel. Because she stated she had not previously seen it. And once she received that email, she immediately reached out to Mr. Dagel and he called and gave me a heads up that he had in fact, received contact from her that night. So fast forwarding to Thursday, that was part of the conversation, was how that conversation with Anna and Mr. Dagel went and she explained that he was at least six to eight weeks out and wasn't going to be able to help. And so after we got off to this phone call, and there was, there was other discussion as well and I can certainly come back to it if you like and Commissioner Freel can bring up any points that he thinks are valid or important. But basically, we followed up with Mr. Dagel after the fact, just to confirm his side of the conversation and he explained that while he physically could not probably show up until six to eight weeks, he could have a meeting immediately to discuss those, those terms and things of that nature. So with that in mind, that was, again, we can, we can go into other details from Thursday, but that's, that's really the, at the crux of the issue. So the next morning, based on a request that she had in that meeting, I provided an email at the direction of Commissioner Freel that reiterated what the requirements are. She'd made a comment that the comments had been changing since the beginning, so I made, took care to provide attachments that show that the requirements that have been set out have not changed since our very first conversation in June. So that is the timeline for this past week, that's a Reader's Digest version of, of the handout in front of me. I also put together photos that were taken back in June that show what the disposition of the building was at the time of our first site visit. I know that was stuff was forwarded to you all as well last week, but I'm happy to show real quick. This is two views of the front of the building. One thing you'll note is that the small structure that comes off the front of the building there, that's where the entrance used to be, it is now an enclosed room. And that is one of the, one of the problems, the reason we need to have an architect onboard is we've changed the means of egress for the building. And then you'll see the addition that was also started without permitting. This is the east side of the building and a portion of the rear behind the trailer that you can see parked behind the building is where the other exit door is currently located. Both of those doors unfortunately, swing in the wrong direction for egress. This is the west side of the building where the addition has begun. This is an interior view of the building, this is immediately inside of that east door. And you'll see off to the right, that's the stage area and beyond that is where that entrance used to lo, used to be, which is now an enclosed room. And you'll see some other, well, you'll see where there's been demolition and also new partitions built. This is going down the west wall, headed towards the back. And as we continue down the west wall, you see this is the area that apparently once housed the original kitchen and that Mr. Rojas indicated they would like to reutilize as a kitchen. Once you get inside, you'll see on the right picture, there's a square ventilation shaft that I'm assuming communicates with the ventilator on the roof. So that potentially could be reused for a commercial kitchen, but again, that's the type of thing that an architect will be able to help suss out. This is still inside the, the old kitchen area, you'll see a three compartment sink on the right-hand side and above that, you see three spools of PEX tubing and one spool of what appears to be piping for gas line. This is looking back, if you, if that room were now at your back, this is the new bar that has been constructed in the left picture and on the right, that's the southeast corner of the bar area. And then this is that same picture again and then standing in the area that it's photographing, looking back out. And then again, this is the addition, you can see that, again, this was begun without any permit, you'll see the foundation is a pier-style foundation, similar to what we would use for a deck or a patio. It wasn't done with any inspection, so I'm not sure if it's frost depth or has any other, the appropriate materials, we didn't investigate that on our site visit. And then potentially by putting this addition on, run into a utility service issue with that overhead line would now be crossing a roof where it did not previously. And then also, we, we have uneven floor services, those are just obvious things that we observed on the site visit. That site visit was primarily to determine what the scope of the operations were prior to our first visit the day before. And really, the, as is shown in all the communication, the immediate answer was, is look, we need, we need appropriate plans per the adopted codes and resolution of the county and that's really where it has held since that time.
Just gonna add to this, so in our, when we talked to Anna on Thursday, again, it was 15 minutes past the time that we're supposed to have the Zoom meeting. On that date, she said she couldn't, she would have to reschedule because she couldn't get her computer to work, so we went ahead and just did it over speakerphone and on Zoom itself. She had, Justin had forwarded a copy of Brandon Dagel's email and she said that was the first time she had seen it, but it had also been sent to her husband, Chris. And Justin, you can tell me how, how, quite a bit earlier, so she'd already, they'd already received the email with the price from Brandon Dagel for seven, eight thousand dollars to do this work. We contacted Brandon right after that meeting and, and Brandon confirmed that he could do it for seven, eight thousand, he could start work immediately on gathering information, but he just could not physically start doing the paperwork portion of it until April. And we had that discussion with her, told her she needed to engage with an architect, get something in place to show that she was substantially moving towards taking care of the issues that they have with the building itself. Today, you guys all received an email from her that she can't be here tonight due to weather. Apparently, there's, the weather's bad between here and Gillette, I'm not sure. But she says in her email today that she talked to Brandon and that Brandon has doubled his prices, which is not the case. It's, he, Brandon had told us last Thursday, it's same price. In fact, he even said that depending on the scope of work, it could potentially be less money than what he had quoted them in the very beginning. So the liquor license itself has been tabled until tonight. She was, Anna was told last week that she needed to make some substantial steps forward in resolving these building issues prior to us coming up to this evening. I've talked, in our conversation the other day, I, I was willing to move it out until, well, we had it happen done by the end of the month. But willing to, and, and I still am willing to move it forward, table it again tonight to the 21st of, of March. But then again, today in this email, she's been told she needs to have an architect in place and now she's sending us drawings that they have created on their own. And this is after she's been told she needs to have an architect in place. I asked Justin and he did, he sent every requirement back to her that would be required of his office in order to, to bring this thing up to code and bring it right. So she's been provided all this information, but yet again, today, there's, it seems to be more excuses. So where I would like to move with it tonight is to table it again to the 21st and see if she engages somebody to get a contract in place and rectify these problems. If not, then I would probably move at that point in time not to renew this liquor license. Anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Justin, for giving us the background. When I hear things about changing egress doors and that they're opening the wrong way, the potential conflicts with service lines coming into the, the building, water, PEX and gas lines, CST pipe, whatever. You know, these things seem to me to be the kind of things that are always going to require inspections and permits from the Nortrona County Building Department, is that right?
Yes, your assessment is accurate, those, and that's why I highlighted that those things in the photos.
Are there, I mean, and there are other things too, I didn't mention, I think, that are depicted in your photos. Is the, is the current condition similar to what was documented in last summer?
I have not been on-site since the date I took those photos.
Charmaine, I think the question for you is, are there any concerns with tabling this tonight until the 21st? In terms of our, our timing and, and all the statutes and regulations and things like that?
No, it'll be fine to table it until the next meeting. You'll have to remove it from the table and re-table it.
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Laird.
I have a teeny bit of confusion. Who actually is the owner of this liquor license?
Commissioner Laird, I apologize, that's not actually something that I'm in, that's not part of the information I'm dealing with, so I, I'm completely unaware of that.
Mr. Chairman, Northern Dreams is the, holds the liquor license.
So that, that's a corporation, Wyoming Corporation, I think we found that they just renewed it in time, I think Mr. Nicholas saw that. So who's the owner?
Of the property?
Of, of the property and of the license?
Mr. Rojas is the owner of the property and he is the corporate officer of Northern Dreams.
And so you're talking to his daughter, is that it?
Yes, in, in previous meetings with Mr. Rojas, he has included his daughter Anna and his son-in-law, Chris. As a matter of fact, the very first meeting I had, I shouldn't say the very first meeting, the, the first time I met Mr. Rojas, the following day, we had a meeting with himself and Chris to discuss, you know, the, the, the requirements leading up to when we actually did the site visit. So they've always been somewhat engaged in the process and helping him.
Well, when he was in here the last time, my impression was that he was confused. I, I wasn't even sure, I don't, I, maybe, maybe he can read well, but I just didn't get the sense of all of that. And then other people being contacted that take him messages and stuff like that. Is there a letter that he can be sent that specifies exactly what he has to do so that there isn't any question, the compliances he has to complete? So we don't have somebody coming in here and saying, well, somebody said this or somebody said that and he has his steps down because I, I think what we're dealing with is a person who, who, who isn't educated in being able to read all these requirements and may not have the money. Now, he still has to follow the rules, but it, it just seems to me like it's a little Now, he still has to follow the rules, but it just seems to me like it's a little deeper problem maybe than meets the eye in terms of where he is. But he has to follow the rules. So if, if, if those are set down in a language that, you know, a sixth, a sixth grade kid can understand, we can get the message across, I think. Not that he's a sixth grader, but some of this language, when I read, like your trigger for, for when you have to hire a, a architect, because ours is a little different. We got 5,000 feet and 10, 10 people in the building, and the city has 5,000 feet and 50 people in the building. So I don't even understand why there would be such a difference, but that's what it is until we change it, I assume. But I'm wondering if some of these things are just too difficult for people to understand, and that does concern me.
Commissioner Laird, let me take a shot at that. So I think if we would have been able to listen to the voicemail that was left, Mr. Rojas, he deferred everything to Anna, his daughter, and wants everything run through her.
Yeah, well, I believe that.
And that was done. So I don't, I don't think anything, any further follow-up. Mr. Rojas has removed himself out of this and has inserted his daughter. And Justin has done everything that he would have given to Mr. Rojas, has been provided to his daughter, just like asked. And so it's really up to Mr. Rojas and his daughter to, to communicate with each other on how it goes.
Mr. Chairman. I, I needed to ask another question. What, what exactly does he need to do?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioner Laird, I see a July 1st letter to Mr. Rojas from the Development Department, from Mr. Smith, that says exactly what he needs to do. It doesn't say where the pipe has to be put, through which wall, and, you know, those are decisions to be made, I think, by Mr. Rojas, and he's a design professional. But that July 1st letter says that he needs a design professional to come up with a plan and outlines the general items that a design professional would be able to, after consultation with Mr. Rojas, submit for approval to Mr. Smith, as I understand it. So I think you've gone about as far as would be reasonable to say, this is, if you want to have this kind of operation, you want to make these kinds of changes, this is what you need to do.
Yes, sir.
So just for my own notification, if I was going to do this, what would I have to do exactly?
If you were the owner in the same exact situation, I would provide the same letter that states that we need at a bare minimum, a code review analysis that details the egress system and occupant load and things of that nature to use in occupancy and the basics of the plan. Because of the nature of the addition, the other thing that I mentioned in there is that some sort of structural analysis may, may need to be done as well. But at the, at the point that I had written that letter, Mr. Rojas had indicated that they perhaps would just demo the addition and not proceed with it. So I left that open-ended in the intention, with the intention that he still had some decisions to make about the outcome of the building. One of the other things that I detailed in the, in the letter is that typically, for this type of occupancy, I do get drawings detailing electrical, mechanical, plumbing, things of that nature. However, I told, the letter states that it may not rise to the level of needing a design professional for those plans and that licensed contractors would likely be able to propose acceptable design.
Does it require, did he hire a licensed contractor?
Yes. Licensed contractors required for commercial work.
And so you have to hire that guy, and then you have to hire an architect? I'm just trying to figure out who all he has to hire.
Yeah, so definitely an architect for design purposes, and then as far as any construction work goes, it would be appropriate licensed contractors for all trades that would be involved.
And then I, did I read it right with respect to the architectural drawings? You, you actually have the authority to waive that under the rule?
I do have the authority to waive that. However, in this particular case, it was, I did not feel it was warranted to waive the code review. The other plans that I mentioned, absolutely, but the code review plan, I, is something that I've got to have at a minimum because of the changes to egress.
Do you have any idea what all that costs for a person to do all that?
According to the estimate from Mr. Dagel, $7,000 to $8,000. I'm not aware of any other estimates.
But that doesn't include the contractor?
No, sir.
Moving the, the lines and all that. And just one thing I was wondering, I might have misheard wrong the last time. The doors opened in rather than out, but that, that's the way they were built years ago, wasn't it? And he's changing them to open the right way, I think, isn't he?
Basically, the previous front door, I don't remember the door swing on it, but it has been deleted. And the door on the east side, he, he told me that it was added. It was a new door, so it was added incorrectly. Once we reach an occupant load of 49, requires to have two doors that both swing outward.
Right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schimmel.
Is there any additional requirement or any hoop or anything that we're, that we're making them go through that we wouldn't require anybody else to do?
No, sir. I, I pride myself on being as fair and consistent as possible. These are the most challenging when we're talking about existing buildings going through remodels.
So this would, this would be same as pretty much just following the procedure for anybody else?
Exactly right. As a matter of fact, I cited that at the same time, we had the complete remodel of Chili's and a similar remodel going on at the Hat 6 Travel Plaza, for which I received architectural drawings for both. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for putting that together the way it is. That helps out a lot. That addition, looks like it's 512 square feet, according to what the stuff that Anna sent to us, 16 by 32. Not that that makes any difference, but just for reference. What is the occupancy level of that building? Have you calculated that out according to what the, for the use? I'm just asking, I mean, it doesn't.
No, as a matter of fact, I, I took some rough calculations, and because my numbers were so close to 100, that was one of the reasons that did, you know, cause me to say we've got to have an architect provide the code review, because there was already some contention about whether my number was accurate or not. And quite frankly, yeah, I'm not the design professional. My job is to review the plans submitted by the design professional. But quick math, I can provide you that at 1,500 square feet of tables and chairs, they exceed what the occupant load would be for a fire protection system. And that was one of the, one of the possibilities that I presented in that letter is that we may, we may need to consider that. But without a code review plan, I cannot make any definitive determinations on any of that. And that's why I chose not to, to provide any solid numbers or calculations.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I was just curious if you, if you actually had a number on that, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We're a little bit behind, so we'll get moving forward, and we have.
Do you need a motion, table it, or is that later?
No, we do that in the business meeting tonight. Anna Kinder, Executive Director of the Health Department, give us an update.
Thank you for your time, Steve. Mr. Chair, one of our staff members is absent today, and I need to get some stuff filed in.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners, for letting me come in and talk. It is past time to have just an update on the Health Department, also to welcome you to the Commission and share information with you about what we do. 15 minutes is pretty short, but I will try to keep it as concise as possible. I did provide just some slides for you. I know they're a little bit on the small side. Happy to send them to you electronically. They were put together very quickly. Basically, it includes our focus and our mission, what our funding looks like, with a larger slides that you can see the different breakdowns between the county, city, et cetera. I also included a quick guide that gives you an update on all of the programs we have at the Health Department, just to real quickly knowing all of the stuff that we do. I also included some highlights from fiscal year '22. It was still a year that we did not have full return of going out into communities for visits or people coming into our clinics for services. But relatively busy, and we are continuing to increase that. One thing that I would point out is we are the last free risk-based COVID testing site in the entire state, working really hard to continue to do that, to offer it to people who just want to know what their status is, if they're meeting with family, et cetera, environmental health, maternal-child health, cancer navigation, et cetera. This year, we added the HeartSmart program, which is the ability to train people to take their own blood pressures after they have a cardiac event. Healthy You, which is working with chronic conditions to increase their ability to take care of themselves and be healthy. And we're working on a lead program with children who have documented cases of elevated lead. We are starting to work with GIS to look at the buildings that were built before a certain time, after a certain time, what we know about the water pipes underneath, and then we'll overlay where we have children that have elevated lead to see if there's any consistency. We do have some suspicions. Public Health does spend a lot of time looking for trends, consistencies in the community, and that is one of them. Wastewater analysis is something that we'll be doing with the state, where we'll be able to test and determine what viruses, the level of the virus, et cetera, happen to be in the community. We'll have two board vacancies. One is a city-appointed, one is a county-appointed. One of them needs to be a physician, so we'll be working on trying to figure that out. And then there's two major concerns that are coming up in healthcare as a whole. One of them is in regards to diabetic care. Dr. Dell with Rocky Mountain Infectious Disease and his partners are actually discussing the need to expand their scope of practice to include work with diabetes, because we have so many patients or clients that are coming in for complications, there's no one to help them. We're also fielding a number of calls, people calling to look for help resources, knowing how to navigate the disease process, accessing supplies, medications, et cetera. It is becoming quite significant, the number of people that are coming in for complications, ages 16 and, or 18 and up, that causes him great concern. Additionally, we have lost a significant number of primary care providers in the community, requiring people to either not seek care or go into the emergency room or more of your urgent, urgent care situations. We also have less and less pediatricians who are providing services through Medicaid. They're refusing to provide that care. So one of the solutions, I know it's always easy for me to come and tell you problems, but I need to have this solution. So one solution that we've come up with is the possibility of having a health navigator that would be housed at the Health Department, something that doesn't fit in the way we're structured or funded right now. It would be drinking out of a fire hose because of the number of people that are calling emergency services for bandage changes or even routine care is happening more and more all the time. So a health navigator possibly could help with some of that and connecting with the resources in our community. We also are working a lot with emergency preparedness. You might have received a postcard in the mail recently that talks about if you need assistance or have functional need to get out of your home, to let us know if you're willing. We'll document that and put on the GIS mapping. We'll make it accessible to first responders. But recently, when the trampoline hit the power source and caused a power outage, there was concern that there would be a number of people who ran out of oxygen and their concentrators would need to be plugged in. At that point, we were going to be the place that these individuals would come to the Health Department, plug in because we have the generator. And if you've been there, you know that that would not be the most pleasant place to spend the night. And I invite any of you to come see the facility or go out on visits or our community activities that we do. We also are in the process of doing a market study, which was determined that over half of my staff are under minimum compensation. So that is probably why we are unable to hire nurses, why we've turned over so many. We've lost 25 people in the last year. And we also have less than a quarter of the staff that have been there for three years or more. And then it brings us to the building. So as you know, that is a project that we're all working on. I provided you some documents behind the presentation. One is the building timeline that I actually pulled from the information that we submitted for multiple grants. As you know, we've been working on this process for all over a year and a half now. We worked with MOA at the time to be a consultant. This was taken out of his documentation that was provided throughout the whole thing and updated to current dates. As you know, the city and the county have been working on the transfer of property. We are delayed with the submission of the RFQ to look for architects that are qualified to design the project. Under the graph, you'll see that the building that we have projected is 35,000 square feet. The cost is approximately $23 million to $29. We have flexibility there because we know, we don't know what the expenses will be or the unknowns. 15.5 of that was committed by you all. 1.5 is from the CNC HD. We feel that we need to have vested interest, and we have placed money into WIO Store that has actually returned its investment significantly. And we'll be able to put that towards the building. We fought very hard for the 4.5 million. Thank you, Commissioner Nicolason, for supporting us in that effort. We were able to secure that. And those funds, as well as the other ARPA funds, need to be encumbered or obligated by December of '24. So that is why I present the timeline, because I'm getting concerned that we will not be able to fulfill those obligations. That was the biggest thing that the state, the SLIB Board had concern with, is that we would be able to spend the money in time. And then we also have the 1.5 million federal earmark that we put in through Cheney, but has come through now, so that we'll have a total of 23 million as of today. With this timeline, we have about six months, actually less now, of flexibility. As you can see, when you get into the final build, bidding time, it will be in May of '24. Typically, bidding of projects of this size happen in February, so will already be delayed, which could put us behind another year. The next page shows you just kind of a possibility what the building would look like. It would include the drive-through for keeping the ability to provide drive-through vaccinations, testing, whatever may need to happen, the possibility for expansion. We would have the entrance, two different entrances, one for people who are sick and could potentially be contagious, as well as an entrance for people to come in that are well seeking other services. And then I would request the following page to include these members in the review committee if we get to that point. I know that was fast, but I was trying to catch you up. And also have emergency preparedness booklets, if you're interested. It's a guide that we have available, as well as the Go State Kits, which provides all of your information put together in one place in the event of a natural or a man-made disaster. So if you would like any of that, I'd be happy to give it to you. Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, thanks, Anna. The, as you know, the, the city is in the process of publishing three consecutive weeks for the authority to transfer the property over on 12th and Conwell. So, you know, we're hopeful that we'll be able to push forward and close on that soon. I see that you have this design team. Who is the design team going to be comprised of?
On the timeline?
On the timeline.
So the part that is highlighted and red?
Yeah, that, the A and E design team.
So basically, an RFQ needs to be put out to the.
Oh, here we go. I didn't see that, these guys. All right.
So we're waiting for the RFQ to be put forward so that we can put it out to architects. They could submit their qualifications, and then we would have the committee that would be able to determine who we select and move forward with. Again, it is over a year and a half of very intensive work that I would hate to see that we lose funding.
Do you have any ideas for possible additional sources of funding above and beyond the 23? Do you have any ideas for possible additional sources of funding above and beyond the twenty-three million?
I do. I believe that there are additional...
Can you hit your mic?
I do believe that there are additional services that we, or grants that we could pursue, as well as if we were interested in talking to other partners that may be able to contribute to the funding of it as well. The twenty-three million would be what would build the building that we would need at this time as we have it placed. But I do believe that there are others and grant sources that could increase our funding.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I know this has been a long process, and I'm looking forward to having it completed and having you in a new facility that's actually beneficial to the clientele as well as the staff. I think that's going to make a big difference all the way around. And I'm glad that we're finally getting the property set in stone so that we can get moving forward. And I hope that we can expedite this as quickly as possible so that we aren't pushing up against that timeline. And so I know that you've, I know you all enough to know that you've already got this stuff laid out and ready to go as soon as the, as soon as we cut the ribbon to say go, I know you're going to be on it. So I think that's, I think that's good, and I'm glad that we at least have a good solid location at this point in time that we can start looking at and getting ready. So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question of anybody. Do we, can this be completed in two years?
At this time, yes, it can.
And we have to finish the deal with the city to get the land. So then, then we have to hire a contractor. Do you already have something in mind there?
So, Mr. Chairman, so the process that, my understanding is that we would need to put out an RFQ for qualifications for architects. Then the architect would determine what needs we would have. You have the contract or construction manager at risk, the design build, all those different versions that we would determine if we would go. This is just an example of the construction manager. So it is all part of the process that we would need to do with that initial design team. So on the timeline, you can actually see that the different colors indicate the different steps that need to be taken care of. But it would be the design team that would look at the different options that we would have, whoever we determined is the construction manager or the design, all those different options before we could get to construction. There's a lot of steps before.
Some of the limited experience I've had with that are from contractors who tell me the best thing you can do is to set a start date and an end date. Because if there's no date set, it just swirls around in the atmosphere. So if we're going to do this, I'd really like to see that done.
So, Mr. Chairman, there is the timeline that states when the grand opening, the move-in would be. All funds have to be obligated by December of twenty-four. The grants indicated the timeline, and yes, at this time, we can fulfill that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne?
Have you got the RFQ started, or at least started to outline it with Charmaine or anything like that? I'd suggest getting that ready, so as soon as city and we get together, then we can pull the trigger on that, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in. The county attorney's office has been provided with a form, I think, kind of a mock-up for the RFQ. And because of the current situation in the county attorney's office, there have been some delays. I think that with a new assistant or deputy coming on, we're hopeful that he can make this a priority. My only thought, Mr. Chairman and Anna, is that he may not have experience in this realm, and so he still may need some guidance and assistance. And I didn't know if our acting county attorney would be the person to do that, or if maybe Heather Duncan Malone, who has also, over her prior stint, and who is, as county attorney, and who has contractually engaged with the county on Title XXV matters, might also be a resource for Mr. Holbrook and Anna to wrap that up. I sure would like to see that be one of the very first things that he does, and I'm hopeful that it could be done within weeks, not months.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. I'll take one of your...
Which one?
I'll take one of each.
Family or individual?
Mr. Chairman, Anna, I don't recall from my Health Department board meetings that I've attended discussion on opioid issues that your, the Health Department might be seeing or even, you know, treating on the side. Are there, you know, opioid, fentanyl, things, substance abuse in general are big issues for our county? But I was just wondering if, and in particular opioid issues, have been something you've seen there at the Health Department?
Yes, actually, we have seen a lot of opioid abuse. Substance use is one of the biggest things that we deal with across the board in all of our departments. Maternal-child health spends a lot of time in this realm, our clinic, et cetera. We do have prevention programs that are there, that is, one of them is funded by you all to us to do. We have engaged on talking about the opioid funds, and we'll be doing a lot of investigation to figure out what the need is in our community. How much is going on, how often do we have repeats, et cetera? But it is an area that we're really starting to get more involved in, knowing that it is a problem that we experience, but really trying to figure out, is there anything that we can do? Answer the question?
Yeah, and as we have conversations in the months to come for opioid settlement, and, you know, we're trying to discuss and engage with, I think, the city and other, others in the county, and I'm looking at the sheriff, to help, you know, us make the best decision for deployment and use of those funds. So I would imagine that you or someone from the Health Department would be involved in those discussions so we can make a good decision.
Yes.
And I just want to clarify one thing. You and I talked about this last week, but the Health Department did not receive any opioid funds. That was just strictly...
Correct, we did not receive any direct funds.
So it's just us and the city? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Troy Hunsaker. Apologize that we're running behind.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Troy Hunsaker. I'm with Peaks Investment Management in Wyoming Class. I've worked with the county for several years, and at the request of Commissioner Milne, he suggested with some new faces here that I come up and introduce myself, talk to you a little bit about what I do, give you kind of an economic update, if you will, and then be here to answer any questions for you. So with that, I'll just kind of give you an overview of who I am, how we operate, and then tell you what we do with the county, if that works. As I said, I'm Troy Hunsaker with Peaks Investment Management. I started Peaks Investment Management several years ago. I'm from Wyoming, was born in Cheyenne, went to LCCC UW, worked in politics for a while, and then I got licensed in securities. In two thousand and seven, I was actually working at Merrill Lynch here in Casper, and kind of married the background in politics with the securities and started working with local governments. So we specialize in working with local governments in Wyoming, Colorado, and a few other states. And I've been doing that with, in fact, Natrona County is one of my first counties ever that I've, that was one of the first two counties I worked with. So I've been working with Tom Doyle, the county treasurer, since two thousand and seven. In two thousand and twenty, at the request of clients, and we saw some opportunities here, we started a local government investment pool. It's called Wyoming Class. I am grateful to say that Natrona County was one of the first participants to sign up with us in Wyoming Class. The local government investment pool offers the county daily liquidity, much like a YOStar does. You're able to put money in, take it out the next day. We are the highest yielding AAA-rated fund in the state. In fact, we are the highest yielding fund in totality. Currently, the county has thirty-three point one million dollars in Wyoming Class. It is yielding four point six five percent as of this morning. That yield has been trending upward, obviously, the last twelve months. I'm sure you've seen the news, and we've all seen what the Fed has been doing with interest rates. And so in that regard, you guys have been benefiting from the rise in interest rates now that you're making more money than we have in about the last sixteen or seventeen years. The county also has five point six nine million dollars with us at Peaks Investment Management. Those investments there are considered longer-term investments. We buy bonds and CDs with specific maturities on them, and they typically generate a higher yield. They don't have the same liquidity offerings that the local government investment pool does. So in total, you guys are about thirty-eight, thirty-nine million dollars with us. We work with eighteen of the counties in Wyoming, several municipalities, several districts. We are business partners with Wyoming County Commissioner Association, also the county treasurers, Wyoming Association municipalities, conservation districts, special districts, and so forth. So we go to about eight to ten conferences a year throughout Wyoming. I give, I teach classes on investing, economics, and so forth throughout the state. Currently, between our two businesses, we manage just over one billion dollars in assets. I share that with you. I'm actually quite proud of that. We just crossed that milestone about two weeks ago. So I'd like to thank you guys for being with us for such a long amount of time and being a part of that. I'm going to just talk about, a little bit about some of the economic numbers and where we are right now. Because we get a lot of questions about interest rates, obviously. And in fact, the chairman of the Federal Reserve spoke earlier today at the Senate Banking Committee, and the overall summary is right now that interest rates are poised to continue going up, despite what we have heard, despite what the Fed has said in the past. Currently, the GDP is at two point seven percent. So our economy is still plugging along, growing. Last year, there were two quarters with negative growth. We thought that we're headed towards recessionary, recessionary end, but that did not transpire as the economy has turned around and started heading north again. Unemployment is at three point four percent. The labor participation rate is at sixty-two point four percent. The unemployment is key here. It's kind of a weird anomaly after the COVID. A lot of people didn't really go back to work in the traditional sense. So there's currently eleven million job openings in the United States. This is near a record high. Four point eight, four million job openings, excuse me, openings minus the number of hires, that's basically the gap between the number of available jobs and those that are willing to work. So the difference between the eleven million and the four point eight, there's about four point eight million jobs that just aren't mathematically going to be filled right now. That puts a lot of pressure on wages because employers have to offer more money to try and incentivize employees to come work for them, so that adds to the inflation factor as well. Something to consider here, too, inflation obviously has been a big topic. Last summer, we saw it peak at nine point one percent. It's currently at six point five percent. The Fed's target is two percent. And so there's, well, inflation has come down quite a bit. It still has quite a ways to go, obviously. When inflation is calculated, there's kind of an anomaly here. Inflation is calculated, it does not include energy and food, and those two items are backed out of the inflation calculation. So what we've actually experienced is closer to double-digit inflation, more likely a peak of somewhere in the fifteen to seventeen percent range, which we've all felt last summer. So inflation has been a significant component here that is a result of a couple things. Most recently, most notably is obviously the COVID situation. The federal, the federal government printed about six trillion dollars in cash. Over a two-year period, they produced basically forty percent of all US dollars ever created in the United States. It is also a result of the spending that the federal government has engaged in quite excessively since two thousand and nine, coming out of the housing crisis. When President Obama was sworn in in January, the federal debt was at about ten point six trillion dollars, and we're currently sitting at thirty-one trillion. So in roughly fourteen years, the United States has tripled the United States debt. So what happens is they increase the money supply, the value of the dollars go down, everything gets more expensive. That was ramped up significantly as a result of COVID. That has put us in the situation where we are here today. As a result of the Great Recession, the housing crisis coming out of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, the Federal Reserve took interest rates to zero. They didn't have many tools left in their quiver. So Ben Bernacki, who was the chairman at the time, instituted what is called quantitative easing. And so what he did is he started buying up bonds to the tune of roughly forty, forty-five billion dollars a month worth of bonds. The idea is, the mechanics of bonds is price and yield move in opposite directions. So if he's buying bonds stimulating demand, it would push the price of bonds up, pushing interest rates down even further. So we went through a period of time, twelve, fourteen years effectively, where we were at record-low interest rate environment. Just as we were starting to recover and come out of that in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, COVID hits, and we go back to that, to that record zero percent interest rate environment. So we were in a very peculiar place historically since two thousand and eight, and that's what we've all experienced here. Obviously, that fed the need or the desire for the Amendment A, which passed in November here. I know we've had discussions about that. Because interest rates were at such low levels, you know, we were all feeling the pain, like we're not making any money. We are now paying the price for that in terms of inflation, so that's where we are today. The, as I said, the Fed spoke, Chairman Powell spoke earlier today, and the indication is the markets actually increased when he spoke. He was pretty, pretty honest about saying that they will continue to raise rates as long as necessary. So the Fed funds rate currently right now is four point five to four point seven, five percent. It's a range, and effectively what the Fed funds rate is, is what they charge banks to loan money overnight. Since he spoke this afternoon at the Senate Committee, the futures now indicate that they think the Fed funds rates is going to go up a full, another one percent point to five and a half to five point seven, five percent. Right now, the markets think that that will cap out around September. And then potentially going into two thousand and twenty-four, there's a lot of talk about potential recession coming. Currently, the Treasury yield curve is inverted, and without going into the mechanics of what that means, due to the interest of time, when the Treasury yield curve is inverted, that is typically an indication of recession to come. And effectively, what that means is you can get higher interest rates by buying shorter-term maturities. So you can buy a one-year Treasury, and you're going to be at about five point one, five percent. If you go out five years, you're probably going to be below five percent. Typically, it's the other way around, but that's an indicator of recession coming. That has been an accurate forecast in like twelve of the last fourteen recessions or something like that. So for the, for the time being, we are looking at interest rates continuing to go up throughout the year. Something I share every time that I present to everyone is the Fed typically says one thing, and it's very rare that they're actually right. So I think a better indicator actually is to watch the bond market. And like I said, the bond market expects us to cap out in September right now. Unemployment being as low as it is historically in the United States, we like to be at about five to five and a half percent unemployment, but we're at three point four today. And again, with inflation, those two factors right there, and those are, those are the key things that the Fed is looking at, is employment and inflation. They're going to keep their foot on the gas, and they have pretty much said they don't care what happens to the economy. They want to get the inflation in check, and if that means putting a... in check. And if that means putting the United States into recession, and so be it. But that is their goal right now. So what that means for you guys, as far as, you know, Wyoming Class, which is a cash account, we expect that yield to continue to go up. Selfishly, I'm quite excited about that. You guys should be as well. We launched Wyoming Class in a 0% interest rate environment in the middle of the pandemic in June of 2020. I think we came out of the gate, and our yield at the time was 0.15%. And so to be at 4.65% today is, is pretty awesome, actually. So I would foresee that in the next few months, the yield there will be going up probably well over the 5%, 5.25%, 5.5% range. So that's really good on overnight money. That is something we have not seen since like 2006. So that does benefit the county in that regard. And the last thing I just want to touch on again, I said, we are the highest yielding fund in the state. I know you guys have money in other places as well, but I would appreciate some consideration. We think about where your money is right now. There's a lot of dynamics in the market, and things are moving at a rapid pace. The, the investment firm that we had partnered with, Public Trust Advisors, they're out of Denver. They're the actual investment managers on Wyoming Class. They manage $70 billion in about 14 or 15 states here, bringing on California and Nebraska. The last couple of years of Wyoming was the newest state, but they're very good at what they do, and that's why we, I chose to partner with them. We are AAA rated by Standard and Poor's, and I share that. That's important because we conduct shock tests quarterly. And effectively, what that means is that if interest rates, if another COVID was going to happen, another housing crisis, and interest rates were going to move significantly, and there was a run on our pool, and everybody, counties needed their money, and everyone wanted to pull it out, is our pool going to remain solvent? And yes, it will. It has passed all the tests. There's never been a single penny lost. And I'd like to point out that distinction, that we are AAA rated, in contrast with YO Star, which is not rated. The reason is, is YO Star gets to play by a different set of rules, and Standard and Poor's will not rate that fund. I'm not here to disparage it, but in terms of safety, it's something to maybe consider going forward. So, any questions at all?
Ms. Chairman, Troy, thanks for coming. I had an opportunity to just visit with you a little bit at one of the County Commissioners Association meetings, and appreciate your expertise. Two questions unrelated. One is, what's the fee structure your firm charges local government entities like county? And then, if you had $50 million, where would you put it?
Yes, thank you for both questions. I'll dive a little deeper on the fee structure, if I can, in that I'm representing two companies here. First of all, so you understand, in the fixed income world, there's two ways that we can get paid in the business. We can get paid a commission, or we can get paid a fee that's annualized. That's an investment, an investment advisor scenario. Okay? It's just semantics at the federal level, if you will. So in terms of the longer-term investments that we work with you guys, the 5.69 million that we have through Peaks Investment Management, we get paid a commission. Now, that does not come out of the county's pockets, and the reason for that is, is everything that we offer the county, in fact, we just did a small piece, maybe $185,000 today with Nick Martinez, I think. Everything that we sell you guys is a new issue, which means that whoever the underwriter is pays us a commission. So it goes to you guys at a price of par, it matures at par, and it does not come out of the county's pockets at all. It's always been very important to us to operate as efficiently as possible and to do it, you know, to maximize the yield to you guys. So we get paid a commission in that regard, but it does not come out of the county's pocket. So I'll make that point. On the other side of things, we can get paid as an investment advisor, and that is a contrast with how we get paid at Peaks. With Wyoming Class, we do get paid an annualized fee based on the assets under management. Wyoming Class is overseen by a Board of Trustees. There are five board members right now. They're all government officials in the state of Wyoming. Their entities also have to be participants within this, within the, within Wyoming Class. So our chairman is Commissioner Novotny from Johnson County, and then we have a County Treasurer, Katie Smits from Teton County, Michelle Henderson from the City of Gillette. She's the Finance Director. She's also on our board. Kelly Little with, now the Wyoming, she was with County Commissioners Waco. She's now with the Wyoming Association of Conservation Districts. She's on the board. And then Matt McBurnett is the Director of Administrative Services in Rock Springs. Those five board members oversee Wyoming Class, and I share that because they have to authorize whatever fees we charge within the fund. The fee is authorized to charge up to 20 basis points. So when I say to you, you guys are getting 4.65%, the fee, the fund is actually probably returning closer to 4.85%. We take a portion of that in return, and then my company gets an even smaller portion of that. So it is authorized by statute, is also, is authorized by the Board of Trustees, but that's the range of the fees there. That is standard. YO Star is managed by JP Morgan. We don't know what the fees are there. There's less transparency, but they aren't doing it for free. And then we do have a competing fund in the state. Their fees are higher than ours. So since our inception in the summer of 2020, we have been the highest yielding AAA rated fund, again, since, since the beginning. And now, when you compare us to the other funds offered in the state, we are the highest yielding fund overall. But I do like to make the point that we are AAA rated. That is important. So that answered the question.
Yeah, and in terms of investment, general guidance?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, honestly.
With where we are in Wyoming?
Certainly, yes. Because the yield curve is inverted right now, and in a fixed income scenario, where there's still a lot of things, I think, to be worked out with Amendment A. I know there's some interest in going down that road. The Wyoming Association Municipalities, I think, has some interest in doing that a certain way. And then I think the counties have an interest in doing it a different way. So I'm not sure how the Amendment A thing is going to pan out for now. My indication, I suspect that we might see it coming up in an interim Legislative Committee later this summer, and then potentially become something official with the next legislative session next year. That being said, in the meantime, because we're in an inverted yield curve, honestly, going short is the best option right now. The higher yield is going to be in the shorter-term investments. When we get to a point, maybe this fall or this winter, where we see that tide turning, and who knows where things are on the Amendment A front, but when we see, okay, cool, this is probably where we've peaked in regard to interest rates, at that point, I would start telling people, let's start looking at longer-term options, at least in the fixed income front, right? Maybe at that point, then you start looking at going to three, four, or five years, locking in the yields at higher rates. We did this, we went through the same exercise back in November of 2018. We knew we had peaked back then, you know, rates went to zero in 2008. It took 10 years for them to get back to pre-recessionary levels. Trump was beaten on the drum, telling the Fed to lower interest rates, and the Fed was giving us signals like, we're done raising rates. And so we shared with our clients in October, November of 2018, like, let's lock in some yields now. And so we did tell people at the time, go long, and they were locking in at 3.5%, 3.6%. That means they're still holding on to those investments till the fall of this year, right? And we didn't see COVID coming, but when COVID came and went to zero, they were pretty happy that they were sitting on that 3.5%, 3.6%. So my advice to most of our clients now is, if you have the ability, let's keep it short. But the time will come when we'll want to extend and lock in those maturities, but we're not there yet. It'll be probably at least this fall. And so, so in that regard, I mean, Wyoming Class, something like that is a great place for it. I mean, the one-year Treasury, those are options as well.
Commissioner Mill.
Thanks for coming, Troy. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Just off the top of your head, if you can, if I remember right, some of the investments that the county has, we've attempted to do a ladder system, right?
Yeah, with, so the County Treasurer's Office has longer-term, I view them as longer-term because they're specified maturities, has investments with us, and then also with RBC. I think the balance is roughly about the same. I don't know what the investments at RBC look like, but in terms of what we've been doing with Tom and Nick, we have a pretty nice laddered portfolio, if you will. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Easy crowd.
Yeah, looks that way. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, I appreciate the time. If anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out to me anytime. If you guys have my contact info. I did leave a bunch of swag next door, so pads, the little cubes, pins, and stuff. I have a whole bunch that's in my living room, so I'm trying to get rid of it now, so.
All right.
I appreciate the time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, maybe we can have Troy come back late summer and give us an update at that point or into the fall at some point.
Yeah, that would be fine. And we'll also be in Douglas in May and at the other events, so we can certainly talk offline as well.
Good.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, we're getting caught up a little bit here. We'll go next with Riley Dewitt, Salt Creek Emergency Services.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. Again, Riley Dewitt, Salt Creek Emergency Services. We're coming to you today asking for $30,000 for wildland gear. This is kind of all brought up last year with the previous Board. As far as I had heard, in September, it kind of got the word that we'd been awarded that, but I needed to send a letter to the county attorney. I sent that letter to him in September, never heard anything else about it. So I reached out to Board Member North, and kind of got the ball rolling again and try and get this taken care of. A little background, Salt Creek EMS takes care of the northern part of Natrona County when it comes to wildland fires, kind of a meat chalade. We have about 18 members at this time right now. So a lot of our wildland gear is outdated, is damaged, it's used, it's, it's time to be, to be replaced. And Midwest has a very limited budget, so that's why we're kind of reaching out to the county to see if they can help us out with that. So, any questions?
Commissioner Nicolason.
I defer to Commissioner North.
Commissioner North.
Okay. So what all specifically are you looking for? Are you looking for shelters?
Maybe.
Wildland gear all the way across the board?
Right.
Because I know you've got a volunteer board up there.
Yeah.
And it's very difficult to get people to volunteer if they have to buy that equipment out of their own pocket.
It is. We're looking, it'd be shirts, pants, helmets, fire shelters, boots, and gloves. And it's going to cost right about $1,700 per person to outfit. So to get these volunteers to try to buy their own gear and still keep them active, it's hard. So, yep.
So with that, have you got, Roddy, what's your, what's your means of inventory? How do you keep track of what is purchased and, and who has it?
So all of our gear, as soon as we get it, it's assigned out to different people. Then we kind of keep a running tab of that, who has what. Try to keep, keep records of what kind of shape it's in, how old it is, and everything like that. So, yeah, if, if we're going to get this money right now, all the gear would be assigned out to people as soon as it arrived. So.
Okay. Do you, I know in the past, the delivery time has been a little bit on the slow side.
Right.
And, and I'm assuming that it's still three to four months out on, on some of this stuff, like, especially if you get with the Kevlar pants and stuff like that, or, you know, some of that stuff, it's, it's a lot further out. And if you have an odd, odd size, and I'm not sure what your sizes of your guys are up there, but.
Right. We've got a little bit of everything. So anything in stock right now, they're looking at six to 10-week delivery time. If they need to make anything, we're looking eight months out to get this. So the sooner we could get this ball rolling, the sooner we could get it here and get it assigned to people.
Okay.
So, yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thanks, Commissioner North, for the question. I think it solicited some, some additional information that I was looking for. When was the last time Salt Creek ES received new kits for the guys? New, new uniforms and boots and all that?
We all, we just, we kind of tried to buy, you know, a couple pieces here and a couple pieces there throughout the year. Our annual budget last year was $33,000. So it's kind of hard to, to replace all that. So I can't think the last time that everybody got new gear. And I've been on the department for almost 23 years now.
So it's kind of on a rolling basis as you can?
Yeah.
And, you know, if something is completely worn out and destroyed, you got to get it now?
Exactly.
Versus this one will last a couple more years and that kind of thing?
Right. A lot of our fire shelters, we're using. National Wildland Coordination Group come out a couple of years ago and said, they're no longer usable. We have to go to this new fire shelter. And those shelters are running about $600 a piece. So.
You said your annual budget's about $33,000. What's the source of funding? Is it all just because you're a district?
No, no, we get them from the towns of Midwest and Edgerton. They pull, they pull their money together, and then that comes to, to the fire department through Salt Creek Joint Powers.
Okay, so what other, and looking at Commissioner North, and Commissioner Mill might also know, but what, what does Natrona County contribute to your annual budget directly or indirectly? And maybe it's through the joint powers?
They don't, yeah. It's all Midwest and Edgerton. They.
In your 20-some years, do you recall Natrona County contributing substantially in a financial way toward this kind of thing?
No.
Anything else?
Commissioner Nicolason.
Yeah.
At one time, the oil producers in that area did help out substantially more, but that is no longer the case. You know, that, that, those, that funding dried up quite a bit. And so, you know, it's similar to a lot of other things in, in those communities is that they don't, they don't have the resources that they once did. And unfortunately, with inflation, it's like the Kevlar pants now. The last ones I bought were about $350, and now they're almost $600 a piece. It's, it's one of those things that if you, when you're, when you're in a bad situation, you can't afford to not have the right equipment. And I don't care what you're doing, if, if that's what you're doing. It can make the difference between life and death. And with the shelters, you know, we always called them shaking bags because that's basically what you do.
Yep.
You hope for the, hope for the best. But, yeah, I know, I know in Mills, we ended up having to replace all of ours for that same reason. And that, and the new ones, it's a world of difference between the old ones and the new ones. Your survival rate goes up dramatically, and they are expensive.
Yep.
Ms. Chairman, one, one more question for Mr. Dewitt. If you still have some gear that works, and we have a lot of financial obligations and requests, would it be something you'd consider to get maybe $7,500 over the course of four years? That'd be $30,000 in total. Would that get you to a place that'd be acceptable, and it might accelerate your replacement of gear as it gets worn out? I, I don't know. I'm not suggesting the other Commissioners want to do that or not, but we, we do have a lot of needs, financial needs right now.
Right.
Any, any thoughts in response to that?
I mean, we're Midwest to the point now that, I mean, we'll take anything that we can get and make it work. I mean, we've done that for years and years and years. So is that a possibility? Yeah, we could do that. Then it goes to, you know, from outfitting 18 guys to outfitting five guys. Then you got to figure out, well, who's getting them? You know, who's got to wait, everything like that. So, but. You know, who's got to wait, everything like that, so, but.
Commissioner Millen.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
So have you also been looking into the federal grants, BLM grant that just was announced here shortly? For Community Fire Assistance Program, have you been, or the Department of Homeland Security grant that just came out for assistance?
Um, I haven't.
Been applying for those?
I have not looked into them recently, no. I do know that there is a couple grants that if we could take some of this money, we could match it to help extend that.
Right, so.
That amount of money.
Like the DH, the Department of Homeland Security one, that's, that's a grant for, from $1 up to quite a bit, so.
Right.
Get ahold of Brian and start running that, because you really need to apply for these grants to.
Right, agree.
That money's there, and like this BLM one, it's, you know, ranging anywhere from 100K to 500, you know, that's whatever.
And I know, you know, Commissioner North knows just as well as I do, grants are hard to get, so.
But you got to apply to try to get.
Oh, yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah, we've, we've tried applying to grants before, and, and we've been told by Department of Homeland Security, oh, yeah, you guys are at the top of the list, and, and you guys should be issuing, and we didn't get anything from them, so.
Unfortunately, with, with some of those grants, because of the way that they distribute them, it's, a lot of it's based on population size, and you just, you fall off the charts really fast when you don't have large population size, and it's, it's within a district, and so. I, I think that, you know, there are certain things that need to be prioritized as far as, you know, if we do cut back. Obviously, your shelters.
Right.
Or something that needs to be changed as soon as possible, because they're out of date, they're no longer in compliance.
Right.
That right there is almost $11,000 for 18.
Right.
I don't know what your, what the supply of your, your pants and your, your shirts are. You know, that's, that's something that.
Right. Some of our, our pants and shirts have holes in them, they've got burn marks in them, stuff like, I mean, like I said, they're, they're used, they're damaged, so.
Yeah, and that, that doesn't do you a whole lot of good when you're in a fire.
No, and to expect these guys to go out and fight fires and.
Yeah.
And subpar gear.
Can't get a grant if you don't apply, so.
Right.
You know, and the deadline for the DHS one is, yeah, this one, so I'd get with Brian pretty quick and try to work that one out.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen Hill.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't have a presentation, but how may I help you? Pardon? It just says, direction on the AV system for across the hall? Okay, what do you need? What do you, what do you, do you have questions for me? You have the proposals? Do you want me to talk about the proposals? It was, this is last minute.
Yeah, yeah, sure, Mr. Chairman.
Go, go ahead.
I was under the impression that you and Mr. Poplick needed some direction from the Commissioners in order to move forward with that conference room that he's been working on, and that there's some AV, audiovisual questions, and that falls under, so that, that's from our Monday conversation?
Yes.
And, and so I was thinking you might be able to ask your questions and then get some answers and get you direction.
What is your vision for the room?
Mr.?
And how do you, I know that sounds a little vague, but I've, I've gathered some proposals, we've had some conversations. We're trying to get organized, and I would like some direction on your vision for the room, how you want the equipment to work? What are you looking for as a group here?
Commissioner Millen, was this the same?
This is what, that meeting that you attended, that the scope crept a little bit, and the price increased dramatically.
Yeah.
From the original, just because of all the bells and whistles that were being added. And that's why you have two substantially different amounts from, from the one company. The, one of the other reasons that, that this conversation is good is we're creeping into the territory of 50,000, where we need to start talking different procurement styles.
In September, we got, started the conversation, and then in November, we got a quote from one vendor, which came in at about $43,500, and that was assuming that we would continue, we would repurpose the TV that's in your old work session room. And then we had ongoing conversations with Mr. Poplick, and we had conversations with another consultant and kind of redesigned. And so that second quote came in at 30,000, and that was in January, I believe. And then the last quote, we went to review that and even made some more changes in February, and that quote came close to 50,000. Some differences between the two, $20,000 differences, is we discussed upgrading the equipment so that you had more options and features. For instance, streaming, or in this room, we have these beautiful TVs and presentations, but the folks who are watching us on YouTube can't see that. So if it's desirable to have those presentations available on YouTube, then that requires an additional piece of equipment or an upgraded piece of equipment. So that's where some of the price increase came from. Another part of the increase came from wanting you to see the total cost of the expense of repurposing that room, which then included, we're going to need a network switch, we're going to need a rack, we're going to need UPS, we're going to want to, you may be, want to be able to have someone come in, give a presentation, bring a laptop, throw their presentation on the screen, maybe invite people from a Teams meeting or Zoom meeting so that you all are collaborating together within the room and on, on YouTube. Having it pretty user-friendly, so the folks who are assisting you with the meetings are able to do this simply with one-touch preset options. Nice projection, good sound, eliminate the microphones, microphone's always on. Trying to capture the essence of the room is what I was thinking when we scoped this out. So we can come back to the table, we can talk about whether or not those are the things that you truly want to continue to do, if it's feasible to cable that room well, lighting, those kinds of things. I just want to understand what your scope or your vision of the room is so that we can hash this out.
And that, that quote that's a little bit, it's higher, the second quote from the same company, that was more or less to future-proof the room, right?
Yes, sir, it was.
So that, who knows what happens in the future, another COVID or whatever, or some big project where we're bringing people in from different agencies or different whatever can, it can all tie together.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman. Eileen, I don't think we need top shelf, state-of-the-art, you know, the fanciest stuff. This isn't, we don't, this isn't the Apple campus. I don't think we need, and this is just me speaking, I, I don't think we need redundancy in terms of being able to do everything in both this room and in the other room.
Okay.
One of my, one of my questions would be, you know, which, in which room would it make more sense to have something that is, something that we'll probably want to live with for the next, you know, 10 years, hopefully?
I agree.
And I don't know if this is the room or if it's the other room. I, I don't know what the cost difference would be. You know, I, I hate to, we, we need to be careful with taxpayer's money. So, you know, I see $30,000, I see $50,000, and I'm thinking, is it really worth it? And I, I still don't know the answer to that question, but what about this room? And what about trying to update and upgrade this room? Does, does that make more sense or less sense?
This system was put in in 2019, and while it works well, there are some limitations to it, as I mentioned, not being able to see the presentation on YouTube. I think it's a disadvantage for some of the, our citizens who may be watching. And since it was put in in 2019, it's possible that we would have to forklift it out. What I mean by that is the equipment may have become obsolete for achieving the kinds of things that you may want to achieve. Or you can just simply keep using this room as you are today, so. I don't know what it would, I would have to have someone can do an analysis on the current system to see if it's upgraded, upgradable to some of the other things that might be desirable. Does that make sense? Okay. It's where you want to have your sessions, I guess, as part of it.
The only comment I have is, I don't see why we just can't continue to use this room. The only thing that I would address is the security during these meetings. And updating and getting security in this whole building, because I don't think there's any cameras out there that I know of. So if we're going to stay in this room, this building, I think we really have to take a peek at, at getting our security enhanced. And I don't, it doesn't make any difference to me whether we stay here or there. If we're staying here and we save money, I just am going to stay here for, for the time being. Because this is something you can always change if somebody comes up with a real need for it. Just a question for Jim. Jim, what would, did you, I guess I kind of heard what you were saying you guys thought about doing with that room, because you started this last year, so I'm not really sure what the history of it is.
Yeah, so overall, the project is, that room across the hall was going to become the, like, we had the small room downstairs for work sessions. That would be that room, and then that way we wouldn't have to move into a different room for exec sessions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's a bigger room that will be able to take, facilitate more people in it for public viewing or for whoever, if we have a big panel. So that's, that's what the plan was for that room. With the thought process that we want to have the work sessions also televised and, and, you know, YouTube or streamed, then we have to make, not just have like a big TV like downstairs, but actually have this whole setup again. And so when the first quote came out, it seemed a little high to me, and that's why we went to another, another provider. It came out at 30, and then, and that was, okay, whatever. And then the second review with a lot of, with some different talk, ideas and whatnot, as far as like having Zoom and being able to provide the presentations.
Yes.
You have to have certain hardware, and so I don't know if that's needed.
Okay.
Because it, it really, it really pumped up the price a lot.
It did.
It was insane, and so I don't know if we need to go that way. If we don't want to have a work session room, a small room where we can talk, and we want to stay in here, then I'd say update this room. But the, the smaller rooms for work sessions, most particularly having an exec session where we can sit and stay, have our computers or whatever, and just sit there and talk and be able to go through this. It did, well, you've experienced downstairs for a work session, it's more convenient than trying to sit like this, but that was the thought process.
Well, thank you, because I, not having gone through all of that, it doesn't bother me to be up here and do it, walk in there for the, because I don't have anything to compare it with. You know, I don't have the new bicycle idea, so.
Yeah.
That's all I was saying.
Commissioner Millen, I would like to also add that on the last quote, he threw in training and support and some additional equipment too, although the enhanced streaming component was a significant increase too. Yeah.
The one thing I would like to make sure, whether we stay in here or go over there, is that, like you said, any of these, anything we throw up there, I would like to, whoever's on the other side on YouTube would be able to see these presentations as opposed to not. I mean, that, to me, that's important, that they're able to see what we're talking about and what we're reviewing.
Okay. As an observation, I've noticed since you've been having work session meetings in here, that it has been convenient. There's some coming and going to your office space, which you also had downstairs. That would be a little bit different for you if you moved across the hall.
Well, would it be, would it be really expensive to, for IT to rig this up so people can see these exhibits?
I don't know yet, but I would be happy to look into that for you.
That, that would be an interesting, because I do agree with the, with all the Commissioners that we should be able to allow the public to see what we're talking about.
Okay.
So here's a thought, is if y'all don't want to have a work session room, it's, you know, one way or the other. But if we didn't spend that 30 on that and have this system evaluated so that we could future-proof it or whatever and just upgrade it, then potentially we could do something here too.
Maybe.
Because we would be saving the money on the redesign of that building, or that room over there with Tom.
Does give you some options for the room across the hall too. We could use another meeting space just for staff. Something would have to occur, but it probably, it wouldn't be as expensive as this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the only thing about the room across the hall is that I do use it during election time. It's where my absentee board meets and my canvas board meets adjacent to that. So that would just be, I would ask that you take that into consideration on whatever plan that you decide to go forth with.
Mr. Chairman, my, my preference would be to have our, our work session meetings in a more informal space, in a smaller space. I was in that downstairs room for only eight months, but I, I, I think it was convenient. And I, I think the, I think it, it would be a good use of that space as a work session room. But I also think that it's not just going to be for work sessions, whether it's the clerk who uses it from time to time, or, you know, if the chairman or the vice chairman or, you know, a couple Commissioners have a meeting with, you know, people from out of town. It's going to be, I think, a better space, you know, where we're not, we, just, just a less formal space. So I, I think that we'll be using it a lot if we have that alternate meeting room, and I think other departments of the county will be using it as well.
I'm just interested in doing what, as Mr. Nicolason said, conserving the taxpayers' money. So when you look at this whole project, what is the best thing for the taxpayers and the best opportunity for them to see the presentations? And I don't mind walking around the building, it's good exercise for me.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to see us upgrade this system. And because it's not just the work sessions, but it's also at night, you know, and we have, we're, not, not just the commission meeting, but also the Parks Board, the plan and zoning and everything else.
Okay.
I think it's important for us to have the room where we can have other types of meetings. But I personally, I think that even though this is more of a formal setting, we usually don't have that many people in here, so it's really kind of informal anyway. So.
Could we get a, could we take a look at this and see what the upgrade cost would be here?
Certainly.
And then maybe revisit the other side and see what we can back out of that, that we don't necessarily need? And then take a look at it at that point and make a decision which way we want to go, Commissioner Nicolason?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. But it sounded like, and just for Eileen's direction, it sounded like there were at least three commissioners that indicated a preference to have the streaming capability to provide whatever we have on the screens here appear at someone's computer when they're, when, so we would be giving her direction to analyze it and get it assessed with that capability, right?
Correct.
Both rooms?
Both rooms.
We're talking the stream, the, the streaming portion, like we're doing now, the presentation. And do we want to have that portion for, if we have a Zoom presenter as well or not? Because that's where everything was really starting to just snowball.
Yeah, that was future-proofing it.
Just present, stream and presentation.
Yeah, and I don't maybe understand that last piece.
So, okay, so you'd have the streaming, like what you're seeing there, right? And then you'd have the sub-window where it's, the camera's not really angled, right?
No.
But it should be on the presenter. Then you'd have another screen for the presentation that we're seeing.
Correct.
And then there's another one, potentially if there was a Zoom person coming in. If you remove that, then we start, as you remove those screens.
And what's that option C cost us?
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying, that's where that almost fifty thousand came into play. Because you're getting, we're getting so, so much capability.
Maybe we don't need.
That's what I'm saying.
But with that Zoom, that additional Zoom portion on there, that would allow Zoom to go out through YouTube also. But we could still log into Zoom, not putting it out to YouTube, people would still be able to hear them.
Right.
Just not see them.
Most likely, yes, that should.
Like we used to do.
Yeah, like we used to do.
So I think we can still have people on Zoom but not spend that additional cost just for people to be able to see them.
As long as we could capture their audio, which I think would be key.
Yep.
To it being successful.
I think I'd rather go that route and
Okay. So we just cut out.
Take that portion out.
Cut out the remote meetings and be able to see presentations on the streaming?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. All right.
Does that help?
It does help, thank you. I guess the last question I might have is, how soon would you like to get this in place?
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
No.
Well, and I ask because I know construction is going to begin, or demolition, I think. And I'm not sure what the supply chain looks like for some of these components. Did you have an idea in mind when you, or do you?
Soon as Tom said with the room started, I'd say.
Okay.
Or at least have, have finalized what, what we want to do. There, there's a little bit of, we should watch it here.
But I, but I think we also need to figure out if we're going to utilize that room or not.
Or maybe a better question is, what budget year?
And we're good people.
Yeah, so, anyway, things to think about as I do the analysis, I suppose.
Maybe you could also find out availability of those materials, so if something's, you know, two years out, well, then maybe we'll need that.
Yeah.
If it's, you know, if everything's somewhere available in sixty days.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the road update with Mike, but Mike will not be here because he is stuck.
Personally, he's stuck?
Yeah. I need the sheriff to go get him.
You need a bigger vehicle, he's in a dozer.
We can go get Mike, but not the dozer.
Yeah.
So I don't know where we want to take this conversation, I know that, so Stacy provided us a lot of information as far as pictures and what things are looking like out there. Mike provided quite a bit of information, he also added, broken down by roads and priority. I think Poison Spider was the biggest road. So I'll just open it up from there, and Commissioner Nicolason is ready to?
Well, no, I was going to ask the sheriff a question, but let's, let's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did, did everybody see the latest Converse County has offered? At significantly reduced prices, their equipment without charging for their personnel. The only thing we'd have to do is pay for the equipment and the fuel. It basically comes in at about a hundred dollars less per hour than what a contractor would up here. And Converse County is basically offering it to us at FEMA rates, which are even lower, substantially lower than mutual aid rates. And that's in, Mike sent out that email this morning, so you guys all should have that, the different rates. I think a D six, he's got a D six, a D seven, and a greater all on there. But Converse County would basically pick up the cost of all their personnel. And as long as they don't need the, the equipment, then they'll let us hold on to it and use it until we can get some stuff done. So that's, that's an option that we have, that would be substantially cheaper, save us a lot more, a lot of money. But I know Dry Creek, Gas Hills, Poison Spider are all some of the top priorities as far as getting some of that stuff done. So I didn't know if you guys had seen that email or not.
So I have, I have a comment, I may make one.
Good.
So this year's about over, got a couple more months. So I wonder if, what we should be doing about a long-term solution? If there needs to be work done on those roads during the time when we can work on them? And if, if, because one conversation I had was about snow fences with some people, and that they'd been taken down, because some landowners don't like them on their property, so of course you have to get the landowner's permission to put up snow fences. And just knowing some areas in Wyoming that I've traveled my whole life that were almost impossible, it didn't ever slow it down till they started putting up some sort of snow fence, whether it was man-made or trees or whatever. So I, what I'm hoping we can do, Mr. Chairman, is take a long-term look at how we solve the problem. And, and I've asked Mike before, do we need new equipment, do we need more equipment, do we need more people? And he, he really never says that we do need more equipment, but then now we're, we're, we're getting equipment. We can't, we can't always be ready for the worst snowstorm and have everything that is necessary, because I know how much that's going to cost, where you might use it every ten years. But there, I think there are other things that can be done, grading techniques on those roads and snow fences and stuff like that that, that we could do. And I, so I'm just thinking, is there a plan that we should be putting into place? And I can't say, anybody can slow down Wyoming wind, but maybe they can divert it a little bit.
So I, I agree we should have a long-term plan and we should have that discussion, but not now. Let's have the discussion now of where we're at today, and, and we still have roads that are blown shut and closed. The biggest concern I have is the amount of money and the amount of money that we've put out now to reopen these roads, and honestly, I don't think we're done. I think we're going to get some spring snows that come in, and if we break these things open and then it snows on top of us again and it blows them back shut, then we're right back where we're at. But we do have quite a few people, one in particular on Poison Spider, that calls us every day, that would like to be able to get the road open. And, and I'm sure that we still have issues of getting the cattle and whatnot out there. So the biggest question is, what's the top priority as far as the roads that we need to get open? And how are we going to go about doing that? And do you have a dollar figure that, that you're wanting to go up to on that? And where's that money going to come from? All great questions, looking for a good answer.
Ms. Chairman, I don't have a good answer. I, I did, I did see the email that Commissioner North referenced from Mike Hagler about the cost of equipment through Converse County. I think that's great news. I think that still could add up pretty quickly. I think if we decide that there is, and I think we have to, make a determination that there's an emergency to invoke that agreement, then that is a great option for us. And Converse County seems ready, willing, and able to provide us some equipment at some very reasonable prices, some extremely reasonable prices. I don't know if we're in a position today to determine if there is an emergency on this road or that road. If, if conditions have changed enough in the last forty-eight or seventy-two hours. You know, Mike said that, last time I talked to him, that they were really close to punching through Gas Hills, which, which could alleviate one of the problems. It wouldn't give direct access to Poison Spider, but it, it would provide at least egress, ingress, egress to that individual, as I understand it. You know, I, I can speak to how bad things out are north on the Coal Creek Road, the county road. Before the end of the county road, it was almost impassable a couple weeks ago, and now today, you know, you don't even have to slow down unless you see a white pickup truck coming. But, uh, you know, it still is brutal farther north. And we can't get to a lot of the places on, on our ranch that typically we have no problem getting to this, this time of year. We've had the oil companies, these two D sixes, we've had a Gillette grader, or a grader from Mahonan brought in from Gillette. We bought a front loader. I, I mean, it's, it's really been a battle out there. It's not county road stuff, so it's not our problem, it's my problem. But in any event, I, I don't know, Ms. Chairman, really where we're at today. And, and so I'm not really in a position to give a thumbs up or an amount not to exceed.
I guess the other question I would have is, was Converse County offering that equipment? Do we need to, I mean, are they willing to just send it over if we ask for it, or do we need to declare?
They are.
Stacy?
I don't think there, there's been, there has not been an official ask. We were just trying to see whether or not their equipment was available.
Uh, they did respond this morning to Mike and said that it is available, and all they, they're just waiting for us to say we want it at this point in time, so.
Commissioner North, but, but that's not all we have to say. We, in, under that contract, that mutual aid and assistance contract, this county commission has to make a determination that there, that there are the circumstances, this is what I was referring to, as invoking the emergency exists clause or whatever that is. So that's what would have to be done, is, it's my understanding.
And that was the question I was asking, is whether they were just offering it or if we needed to invoke that, so.
My understanding from Mike was that they were just offering at this point in time, that they did not request this under the mutual aid agreement, but they're just offering because we ask. It's just like the, the rates, them offering as FEMA rates instead of mutual aid rates. You know, they're, they're just saying that if, if they get snow, they want to be able to pull that equipment back. And I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Mike, but he, he's going to be here tonight, or he's going to try to be. And I'm sure he can answer these questions a whole lot better than I can, because he's the one that's been in communication with them directly.
Commissioner Mill?
So, I agree, it's, it's difficult without Mike being here to have a informative decision or discussion even. So, but based off of what he's saying on his plan, I'd at least take a look at the top three, the gas, Poison Spider, Gas Hills and Buzzard. With Gas Hills, his plan is that he'd be using our equipment. With, if we look at Buzzard and Poison Spider, that's, he'd like two, he'd like basically three dozers, additional dozers. You know, whether that comes from Converse, Teton, Laramie County, wherever for mutual aid, or just Converse because they're being nice and they want to help us out. Or if we use a contractor, that, that doesn't matter where the equipment comes from, other than a little bit for the price with the, with Converse help, you know, doing it, but can they afford to get, or do they have the three dozers of that size available? One. And two, would, with that being said, the other roads that he's, he's kind of got highlighted there. But, but I'd look at his top three at the very least. Poison Spider Road though, I mean, he's opened that up seven, eight times now. You can see where the different windows, it's ridiculous. I agree with Dallas that in the future, we're going to have to have that discussion about how we manage this. But I'd say at least, if we can open up those top three, that would open up some equipment potentially to get the rest of his work done. It'd be best served if we could save the money and use Converse's at, at that lower price. But yeah, we need to, I'd say we need to open something up so that we can get in there. You've got not just the cows, you've got some oil field stuff back there, you've got other, other issues besides just that. So it's, we're not talking about going all the way to Fremont County line, just getting in there where we need to get.
Commissioner Mill, according to the email sent back from Converse County, they do have, they have a D six and a D seven available, as well as blades.
Okay, so he, he was talking about two D sevens for the, for, uh, from
And we, we.
For Poison Spider?
Yeah, and he has one out there currently.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, one D seven out there, and then the D six would stay on Gas Hills, and then he'd want another contract dozer out to Buzzard. And, you know, maybe that one only needs opening up once or twice, once. And I think we can move that dozer at that point or something like that, you know? But I'd say we need to look at least probably three dozers and get those top three opened up.
You've been talking to him a lot, so my impression is he's doing everything humanly possible with our equipment. Am I right about that?
And with the lack of some equipment too, because we've had things go down.
And our people have been working overtime. So we're, we're doing everything we can do. Now, I guess that what I'm hearing is we can maybe acquire some rental equipment and hire more people. Is that involved in this too, to run the equipment, extra equipment?
Well, we're, what we're talking about doing is asking for mutual aid assistance to have equipment and personnel from other counties come over and help us.
And they're willing to do that, but we pay them a certain fee.
So far, it looks like.
You know, I, I guess to simplify it, for me, I think we have to do whatever we can afford and whatever is humanly possible to help our people out in the county get their roads open. It's a simple equation for me. So if we can afford it and it's available, we should be doing it and opening up the roads. And I think that's what Mike Hagler's saying, isn't it?
Well, it is, but we also need to, there's other things in place. We need to trigger a declaration asking for assistance, some mutual aid assistance to come over here. So it's not just a guarantee, we've got, there's a process.
Yeah, but we, what we do is we have to vote on that, right?
And, and.
So we pass a resolution. So we pass a resolution of some sort, which is pretty simple. Make a motion, pass the resolution, and, and do whatever we can do. We can't do the impossible, but if there are things that are possible that we're not doing, that's probably where we should focus our sights. And we have great people working for us that understand these things, I'm assuming. Hagler knows it as well as anybody.
I, I don't, I think this is manageable. We just have to provide Mike the, the tools. And maybe it isn't, we, obviously, we can't get everything done all at once, but we can start working on those top priorities. And as, as equipment or personnel become available, we move down the list. It's always about prioritization, right? So, where does this money come from, though? That, that's a good question. We're going to have to, if we go this route, we're going to have to find it. It's not something that we can not address after the fact. We need to have a good plan on it.
Jim, is there an estimate on how much this is going to cost us? I, I missed that number if it was mentioned, or a possibility of what it might cost us?
It depends on how many days, how many weeks that we keep using it, and how long they're out there.
Is it going to be over five hundred grand? Is it going to get to those kind of numbers?
No. According to Mike, even if he hired contractors, and the estimated time that he had with the, the contractor costs, which was substantially higher, it was about two-hundred-and-thirty-two.
So.
But that was.
From his email, I have five contract dozers that were available last Friday, that are rates range from one-hundred-and-fifty-five to two-eighty per hour with operator plus transports. This is contractors, not, you know, the county. On the high end, a month of one dozer could be five thousand and forty dollars, times that by five, you've got two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand.
Yeah, and the, and these prices, though, from Converse County are, like I said, about, they're substantially lower, and we don't have to pay the personnel cost.
So it's our job, then, Mr. Chairman, to approve a budget, to come up with a budget, find out what money we've got, and what we can budget, like everybody else asks us for money. If we've got the money, we should cough it up and get this done.
I, I'm with Jim on this. I think we need to work on the priori, prioritize the areas that Mike was concentrating on. Poison spiders, Gas Hills, whether that's Buzzard Road, or another, or Dry Creek. My impression from Mike was, there are some that are a little bit higher priority. Fortunately, the weather's going to start changing a little bit next week, which will help out, too. But, part of the problem, too, with poison spider, with the amount of snow that we actually have sitting on the roads, when that melts, you're not going to be able to get down anything. There's no way in the world, if we don't get that water off the roads, then it's not going to dry out at all. It's going to be, you're going to have all kinds of people stuck out there and everything else. So it's, it creates additional problems if we don't get that snow off the road, other than, other than just having the snow off the road right now.
That gets, gets me back to my original question, what's the budget?
Peter, did you have something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just don't think we're in a position to make decisions right now. I, I think we need Mike to give us the, give us the status update, based on what's happened today. And maybe, maybe that'll happen tonight. But, you know, I, I have, I have, my heart says we should go out and do whatever it takes, but we're also needing to be responsible about, and good custodians of this money that we're entrusted to, to take care of. And so, you know, I, I don't think we can authorize anything yet. And I think we also need our county attorney to advise us on how we borrow Converse County's equipment. Because I, I think that road and ridge departments may say, "Sure, here, just take it." But I, I don't know legally if that's the right course of action, and if our county clerk can pay based on, on that kind of deal. So I, I think we need Charmaine to advise us on what the process is to start renting and borrowing equipment. So, anyway, that's where I'm at.
So who do we have to address this to about a budget? Isn't it us?
We're, we're getting there, Dallas.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, could you potentially help us out in identifying some monies that would be available, so that we can move forward on this? And Dallas would have his question answered.
That would be fabulous. If I knew how much money I had to spend, I'd know which movie I can get into.
Wow, okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would say we would have adequate funds in one-cent cash reserve, that is previously unspent one-cent monies that we have. I'm not sure the exact amount in that account right now, but I think it would be appropriate to use those funds for this type of expenditure.
So is Mike going to be here, so we can ask him, does two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, is that what he needs? And if that's what he?
That, that was if he had contractors. But, but we'll see if Mike makes it out.
How much?
That was for five. We're talking three jobs in for a couple of weeks, because the weather gets better and they start moving.
Yeah, the price has gone down, too.
But Jim, if we add two-hundred, if we budgeted two-hundred thousand, if we approved two-hundred thousand, doesn't mean he has to use it all, doesn't mean that that'll do it.
Right, we could approve it.
But at least we have something going, where we can get these guys started, until another meeting and all that, and, you know.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We manage to do the dozers, we prove up to his recommendation, or whatever, and then he doesn't necessarily mean he has to spend.
Right, right, that's my point.
Sure.
But at least we've done our job, we've figured out the money, we've made the budget, and I trust him to tell us exactly what he thinks is right. He's worked for this county for twenty-five years, or whatever it is. I trust.
He's a subject matter expert, that's why he's.
Yeah, exactly. I wish he was here right now, actually.
Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Peter, go ahead.
I, I don't, I don't think we're in any position to be talking about two-hundred thousand dollars. I think that if I do the math, at basically four-hundred dollars an hour, that's three machines, two of which are one-hundred-and-fifty an hour, and one is the D-six from Converse County at a hundred an hour, okay? So that's three dozers, times eight hours a day, times five days, that's sixteen thousand a week. I think we're more in the ballpark of not to exceed fifty thousand. That's more than two weeks, eight-hour days, five days a week. So, that's more the ballpark where I think we're at. But I, again, I think we need to hear from Mike.
So I, I would make the suggestion, and Mike should be here tonight, so let's get him in here, figure out exactly what he needs, where he needs it. Let's verify that, that the direction we need to go, as far as if we do a declaration to have Converse County come over here, or if they're just offering to do it, then legally, how do we need to go about doing that, so they can get paid? And, we'll do the math tonight, and we figure out exactly how long he thinks he needs, what amount of equipment, do the math on it, and then we can do a not exceeds from there. Because it sounds like we've got a line item that we can utilize. But, again, let's come back to Mike to make, to help us make those decisions on what's important and, and what the needs are.
And, and not just for payment, but when we throw the track and we tear up their equipment, you know?
Yep.
What happens?
And we, and we don't have a competent weatherman to tell us when this big, usually this big, huge snowstorm hits, it's state basketball time, too.
Stacy, was there anything that we were missing here that you can add to this, or any questions you need answered?
Thanks, thank you. The only thing I can say is, Converse County is the only county that I contacted, so I don't know if anybody else has got any other equipment through the mutual aid agreement. And we are supposed to get snow and wind, again, this week, next week, yes, it's supposed to warm up, but we are, we are expecting some snow this week, so.
Oh.
The sooner the roads get open, the better it is, and easier it is to keep them open after that.
Yeah, and Stacy, I didn't know if you knew or not, the city is allowing us to utilize their, their blower out west at the airport. So, Mike's got that out there, yeah, right now, and they're not charging us anything for that at all. So we just have to fill it up with fuel. And so, that's helping out. So he's already, already taking advantage of, of some of the offers, the free offers out there.
No, I don't, I don't want to. All right, so that, that'll be our plan, is, we'll listen to Mike, and then we'll be able to get you some answers back. Biggest concern I have is that all this equipment that we use, just like you said, throws the track, it breaks, we're, we're paying for it, so. So it's kind of hard to throw a dollar figure on something, that if you go and break it, we'll just say we can't fix it, because we said we wouldn't spend over X amount of dollars. Wish that doesn't work.
Then we adjust it, Mr. Chairman, we adjust it.
Yep.
We know things are going to happen that we can't count for, because nobody here can create a crystal ball, but we just got to get a plan and get it rolling.
I didn't say we weren't doing it, Dallas.
I know we are.
We're going to have a discussion tonight with Mike, when he gets there.
All right, sounds good.
All right. Okay. Unless you had something else? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we will move over to Charmaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can we take like a couple of minute break?
Okay.
Just short.
Take a real quick, five-minute break.
Now, we should give one of those every three hours, whether we need it or not.
It's only been two and a half hours.
Okay, every two and a half hours.
I had you, I had my knee.
Yeah.
I think.
And, and, and we just can help you. Okay.
Thank you.
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 Follow an advertising procedure to get this done before the end of the month, unless you are willing to call a special session, which is a pretty extraordinary type thing. I'm not sure, though, that we are necessarily held up by the the lack of a publication right at this point. The, and Charmaine and I were discussing how 124601 of the Wyoming statute works. This pertains to transfers of licenses. And it's the sentence that is operative for what we're talking about today is fairly straightforward. I'll read it to you. "After public hearing and with the approval of the licensing authority, a license or permit may be transferred to or renewed on different premises on the same basis as the original application." It didn't, what is interesting about that is what it didn't say. So, I think there's some flexibility with the commission to, if they wanted to, to actually approve the renewal, approve the transfer, subject to a later publication. And allowing people, if they wanted to, dispute it at that point. This is not a new procedure. Much of what? This is something we see that is done oftentimes in Chapter 11 bankruptcies. And in many ways, this has the same aspect. A receiver is acting very close to what a bankruptcy trustee would act like. In that regard, one of the issues is this. Did the appointment of the receiver actually put a automatic stay, an injunction on this? I wish I could give you some opinions on that one way or the other. But that's something that we'll both be looking at. Back to the Chapter 11 analogy, oftentimes what we see is the business needs a quick infusion of cash. There's post-bankruptcy lenders willing to help. But, and it has to be on an emergency basis to keep the employees, keep everything going. And so, the judge will allow then an interim financing order to go in with the, all the due process and publication procedures to happen afterwards, so as to preserve the asset. So, I think that that is something that isn't, you know, the, if we wanted to have an approval before March 31st, with a publication afterwards. I mean, I, I would like to argue there doesn't have to be a publication on this. But I think Tracy would probably be taking umbrage with that. So, I, that, that's kind of bringing you up to speed, some of the positions that we're talking about. Charmaine thought that we should probably table this for tonight and allow this to gel until your March 28th meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 21st meeting. So as to just let you absorb some of this and see if you're, you know, if you even want to keep the license alive. You may choose as a litigation tactic to just let it revert back to the county. I hope you won't do that. But, so that's where we're at. And, you know, I'm open to any questions that you have as to this twisted procedure, this twisted mess that keeps coming up.
Commissioner Mill.
So, I've owned a liquor license, actually. And on the city council dealt with a lot of liquor licenses and we're dealing with some here. But I think we have to follow the statute on the advertising, Steve. One of the things that I have to put you guys on total notice of, and I think you are, and that is that we have been, the commission has been sued by Mr. Winship. And that case is before the Supreme Court right now. And I think that, when is the final, the argument, so April?
April 13th, 14th or 13?
13th or 14th.
Yeah.
So, so that has to be argued by our county attorney. I've read the briefs on that. I don't know if anybody else has, but I've read the briefs. And the base, there's one issue in there where they're claiming that the commissioners did not properly have a meeting with respect to this. And Steve could probably outline his issues. But the commissioners were never made to be a party in that underlying case. So I think they took the position, there was no jurisdiction of the court to tell them to do anything. And I personally share that opinion. I don't think that, that the commissioners were under a jurisdictional requirement to grant anybody anything. And, and I don't think they are here either now, because we've never been made a party to any action. So the Supreme Court will, what, they'll decide whether the commissioners that did this can be fined 750 bucks each? And are they going to decide whether you should have gotten the license? Is that also?
No.
What, what's the main question on appeal?
Main question, yeah. This isn't as to the merits of the actual decision. It was the procedure that was handled. Is liquor licenses subject to the contested case requirements under the Wyoming Administrative Procedures Act? That's?
So that's, that's the question. So, so here's the issue. If, if we, if that license lapses, I think the Supreme Court case is moot, which that means that the Supreme Court dismisses it because there's nothing at stake. There's also something else I've never got a chance to ask you about, Steve. And that is, it's my understanding that there is a security interest on file on that license by?
Jim Kaufman.
Is it him personally or the company?
Lindlaw, Lindlaw.
So there's a, there's a, there, there, so that's another issue that he has to battle, whether that, that is a viable legal, it's like having a, an encumbrance on your car title. He has that on this license.
That's actually been resolved. Lindlaw was fully paid off by, at the foreclosure sale. And so, to the extent that lien was valid.
But, but I think the mortgage was only on the building. The security interest is separate from the building mortgage.
We're looking, so the mortgage follows the note. The entire note was satisfied.
Has that been released? Is there a release on file anywhere on that?
No.
I didn't, I didn't think so.
No, I need to, and, and Jim Kaufman has been questioned about that.
So, so, so let me shift over to our clerk. So is the application of Mr. Pilcher proper to get his license renewed?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at the time the application was received, it was proper. One of the questions on the application is, do you own or lease the building? At the time that Mr. Pilcher signed, filled out the application and sent it in to me, the question was answered correctly. However, the situation has changed now with all this information.
The foreclosure?
The foreclosure, yes.
So the, the building has now been foreclosed on. The redemption period is run and it's now owned by some other corporation?
Correct. And in speaking with Mr. Pilcher, he informed me that he would, was able to obtain a lease through the new owners. And he was to have that to me last week, and I've not seen that as of today.
So there's no, so, so there's nothing proper before you that could renew that license in that same building?
That is correct.
So, how long does he have to get you a lease for another building?
Well, a lease on another building would require a transfer. We would have to transfer that license. And of course, there's publication deadlines that we have to meet for that. And then also, renewal or a transfer hearing has to be prior to the expiration date, which that timeframe?
So this all has to be done by the 30th?
But that timeframe has passed on the renewal or transfer, yes.
So, so then, the way I understand it, Mr. Winship is, is that the person who has a license granted to him can ask for renewal and the commissioner can turn that down if there's legal authority to show that he shouldn't have that license again. Now, in the case of somebody coming and wanting a license for their first time, the commission can just turn it down and there's no right of appeal. The statute's very clear. So we can say to somebody new that comes in here, ask for a license. Now, we don't want to give it to you because we don't want, park some license in somebody's house. It's over with, there's no right of appeal under Wyoming law. I think that's correct. Somebody will correct me if I'm wrong. So, so, Mr. Winship, if this commission decides to just not grant that license at tonight's hearing, that this case is over with, isn't it?
When you say this case?
This issue about the license?
Yes, I, I thought I made that clear. You, you guys clearly have the right to be able to take this away from the receiver. Well, you know, the receivership throws a whole new wrinkle into this.
There's no jurisdiction there on us with that either, I don't think. I just don't see it. But if, if we say, if we, if we deny the license tonight, the only one who has a right to appeal that is Sonny Pilcher. And with what our clerk has said, if there's not a proper application here, that may be our only legal action that we can take. I'd have to hear from our county attorney if she agrees with that, however.
Mr. Chair, as things stand right now, that's accurate. The current application does not have a location. It doesn't own the property and it doesn't have a lease. And so, that is completely accurate. The reason to table it would be to see if there was any other option for Monty Elliott. And so, that's up to you.
Well, if the, do you agree with the, my thoughts that if we don't grant the license, that you would file then a motion with the Supreme Court saying the case down there is moot because there's no license to be fought over down there?
I think there may be another issue that would not be moot, so.
Which is what? The one about having an improper meeting by the commissioners where they're trying to fine, fine each commissioner 750 bucks?
Yes.
But if the meeting itself, there's nothing left to gain from that, from, from having that meeting reversed? Because I was also in one of those, Mr. Chairman, where the, 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 the meeting was appealed. I have the order, I think. I, I got one for Charmaine, too, where the Judge Forghey ruled on this at one time against the city. But the only thing that happened there was, yeah, you had an improper meeting, one of your executive meetings to the city. And all it was required was for the mayor to go out and say, "We took no action in that particular meeting." Because you can't take actions in executive sessions. They have to be done in open meetings. So, but you get back to this case that saw an appeal. There was, I didn't think there was ever any jurisdiction. I thought the commissioners did the right thing, actually. This was before the election. That was my opinion when I looked at what had happened. But Mr. Winship is a very fine lawyer and he finds all the, he'll fine tune everything. But I think on, in this situation, you just have to be aware that if you, you, I think you have the legal authority to deny the license and that ends the problem. The next thing then is something is filed saying the license doesn't exist. The, Monty Elliott has no reason, can't appeal the fact that you canceled Sonny Pilcher's license. If he wants another, if he wants the license, I guess he can come in and apply for it. But when I checked, Mr. Winship, the bond and the documents weren't signed yet by, by your new representative.
He was, no, he has not taken the oath.
So that, so that isn't a binding valid document yet that we're bound by. So tonight is the night we can make the vote on this license.
I think the?
And if Mr. Pilcher shows up, which I would recommend that he do show up so he can tell you what's going on himself, because I, I don't know exactly what's going on. But I, I, I've checked it out a few times just to see what was going on because of the case against the commissioners. So I got the briefs, I read the briefs. And of course, I'm a commissioner. I don't, I don't like seeing the commissioner sued and I'd like to somehow defeat that lawsuit, even though I think very highly of Mr. Winship.
So the question is, are we, you going to let the tail wag the dog? Let that appeal?
I hope not.
Decide all of this and let this license revert? And if, you know, if you're going to use the vote for purposes of subsequent litigation, I guess that's your prerogative. I hope, though, that you're looking at a bigger picture than simply using this as a litigation tool.
But I, I still think, though, Mr. Winship, you have to face the fact that there is a lien on that license. Now, I don't know what, that's another case for you.
That, that?
But that goes away if we, that goes away as well if we don't grant the license. That cleans up the whole thing for the commissioners.
The lien, let's assume there was a lien on there. How would that in any way affect the application, the transfer? Many of these licenses have?
That, that legal question I haven't, I haven't researched because I only went as far as how this would affect the commissioners.
Yeah.
And I think I have a duty to tell the commissioners how I feel about it. You know, I represented Sonny Pilcher 20 years ago and I know Jim Kaufman. Of course, I know you and your family very well. And so, so I'm going to abstain from voting, but I think I have to, I think I have to explain what I believe is the legal issue here for protection for the commissioners should they decide to listen to the advice of myself and Charmaine.
One consideration is, does Mr. Pilcher even have standing? Does he have the ability to appear before you? Because even though Randy Hall has not gone through the formalities yet, he unfortunately is, he would be here today but for his chemotherapy.
Yeah.
But he, to me, is the only one that has the ability to do anything with the license in light of the signed order. And so, you wouldn't be transferring it to Mr. Pilcher. It would be, Randy Hall has been given, or, and brokerage one, has been given the, the authority over that license, so.
Well, but the license has to be, so, we have to do something with the license. He's made an application. He has a right to have it heard. He has a right to come here. And until the legality of your person is in effect, we can't, we, it doesn't exist for us. If he gets, if he were to get the license, and I don't know how the commissioners are going to vote on this, but if he were to get the license and then your man gets appointed, then I suppose then you have something to do about coming back here and, and making some argument, which I'm not sure will prevail here either, because I just don't see where there's any jurisdiction over this commission. We have to follow the law on how we, how we handle the licensing. And, and we have to, we, it says when you have to file your, we can't, we can't have where you, where we would hand out a license and then have public notice given after that. We, there would be taxpayers coming out of the woodwork on that one. And so, we have to follow the law. And I rely now, I'm going to rest mine on the county attorney with respect to what I think should be done. Because I don't think we owe, we don't owe any litigant anything. We owe people who have the license, if they didn't. If he went in, if he had a driver's license and he went in with the wrong application, they wouldn't listen to all kinds of arguments, either have it or you don't. You got, you got, it's just like what we went through with the guy at the North Forty. If you don't follow these rules, you're not going to be entitled to get this. You got to follow the rules. And we have to follow the rules.
And, Mr. Chair, if, if the board wants to vote tonight, then as we discussed, the applicant does not have a property. So, so that's pretty straightforward. If the board wants to give a little time to consider if there is any option, and, and there may not be any option, then they could table it and vote on the 21st. So that's all this is, is Mr. Winship is explaining his position, his background, the, the background. And I, I don't want to litigate the Supreme Court appeal or, or anything right now. Just whether or not you want to vote tonight or table it is really the question, the first question.
I would agree, okay. Anybody else?
I, I have a question of our county attorney. If, if we table it, can Mr. Pilcher come in and file a proper application with a new lease and be able to get the license? Or is he out of time altogether on doing that?
Mr. Chairman, I, I want an open discussion as much as possible. There's both pending litigation and potential litigation. And so I just would make us all aware that at some point, there's a line that we might be crossing. And so, I just mention that for convenience.
All right, thank you. And that's a nice reminder. And I, I think it's easy to just not answer that because I forgot your question already.
My question was, is can Mr., if Mr. Pilcher shows up here tonight and says, "I'm sorry, I've got another lease on another building that qualifies," does that correct his application? And I see somebody shaking their head, "No." So what's the sense, then, of tabling it? If the applicant can't save himself, if his time limits have all run, what's the way to table it? We're not collection agents for Mr. Winship or his client.
Okay, is there anything else on this one?
No, the only, I would say that I misunderstood Dallas if he was saying that in order to have jurisdiction, you would have to appoint the receiver as opposed to a district court. And that's what I, I?
No, I didn't say that. What I said is, there's no jurisdiction over this commission concerning your trial that you just had or the appointment of Randy. There is the case in the Supreme Court that has this other issue that involves this same license.
Yeah, and it's, and, I mean, I would think you'd be concerned that if you do allow this license to revert and the Supreme Court reverses, has, are you going to have to untangle everything if you resell that license? I would, I, I would think that's another reason for tabling this as to what the uncertain outcome would be if the appeal was reversed.
Commissioner Mill.
Madam Clerk.
Sir? Oh, sir.
When was the deadline for the transfer property, license to a different property? What was that deadline, the date?
So, it has to be, the transfer, the approval or the meeting has to be done 30 days prior to the expiration date, which is March 31st. That's why we were?
And you did have some communication with Pilcher or whoever, the holder of the title, or the license?
Regarding?
Transfer.
Not transferring a location, no. I had conversation with Mr. Pilcher that he, in fact, does not own the property as stated on the original application and that he needed to provide me a lease. And he said that he was getting one and he would have one to me, which I have not gotten yet.
How long ago was that?
I believe that was last week that I spoke to him.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's one thing that's out there that's fuzzy. Steve, there is no jurisdiction for you to acquire that license right now, as we said here, is there? You're hoping you might get a ruling from the Supreme Court, which hasn't ruled. But as we said here, there's no court order preventing us from doing anything with this license, is there? I mean, honestly, is there a court order to give it to?
I mean, I, I'll be glad to address this, but one of the problems was that the, the commission ended up being put into a position of acting as the appellate court. And I, and, you know, I, I, I regret that that happened. But Lindlaw kind of came in and said, "You need to disregard the order that Judge Forghey entered that said the license was to be transferred." You know, all of a sudden, we have some rather interesting constitutional?
That was the old commission, that was a while back. That's not with the new commission.
Anyway, so, on that license, which is the, what we're talking about, you know, and so I kind of hesitate. Your question is also kind of trying to get all five of you to act as an appellate court again. And I, I, I mean, I can go ahead and treat it that way, but I, I suspect that the separation of powers is something that least a few of you respect in that regard, so.
I know you well enough to know if you had a court order that prevented us from transferring that, you would present it to us.
I do not have a court order, no. No, there's, there's nothing in that regard.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mel.
Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to quickly run down some of the things on the consent agenda. The first resolution, it says amending bereavement leave policy. Currently, an employee has to be an employee for, I think it's six months, before they're entitled to bereavement leave. This resolution amends that section by removing that requirement. So, there, there's no waiting period. Let's see. The, the next contract, I imagine you already discussed, but that, that's the big chunk of money for the new health department facility. The next two resolutions are to establish a road and that is for Mike Kegler's federal road project up on the mountain. And so, what that's doing is, the first resolution has to be first and it's, the owners of the property have to file consent with the clerk. And so that has to be done. And then you can pass a resolution establishing the road after the first one's been filed. The next two are just pointing viewers for road vacations. And that's, that's all I have for the consent agenda. I do have one and a half issue to discuss in exec session.
All right, so can I get a? Commissioner Mill.
I'd move to go to exec session pursuant to Wyoming Statute 6405, A sub double I, as well as a triple I for land, legal and personnel issues.
You sounded like a lawyer there.
I got a cheat sheet right here.
It's been, been moved by Commissioner Mill and then seconded by Commissioner Nicholas Nolan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we're in executive session.